Let's call this regular board meeting an executive session of the Silverfall School District Order. All right, please join me in the flag salutes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, first order of business is to nominate and elect a board chairperson. So, the process is I'll open the floor to nominations and if anybody would like to nominate anybody, we'll take all the nominations and then we'll have a vote and once we get a majority of four, we'll have a chairperson. Okay, do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jonathan Edmonds.
Jonathan? Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to nominate Tom Buchholz.
Okay, anybody else?
I would like to nominate Janet.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we got three nominations, I'll close the floor to nominations and let's select. So, to do it, just take a piece of paper and write down who you want to vote for. And then pass them to me.
Are we going to discuss names?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, have some discussion first, please.
I just wanted to say that I am strongly considering voting for Jonathan because I think that Jonathan really can see a lot of different perspectives and consider those perspectives and I appreciate that and I think that during this time, that might be a really fine asset. And that's not the only thing that I think he does well, but that's something that's really important to me right now.
The reason that I have nominated Janet Alanack is because I had the privilege of sitting with her during the forum and her great command of the legislation and also parliamentary procedure as well as understanding the Silverfall School District right now. We really need someone to navigate us through, I would say, a very tough time and I believe that she has that skillset and knowledge to take us there.
And the reason I nominated Tom is because I feel like we need some continuity starting out and somebody that's got some experience. Just based on my past experience, it takes a while to get integrated into the system. So, that's why I nominated Tom.
I can agree with all of that. So, thank you for all, for all three of you for willing, being willing.
Everybody's willing? Let's get that out of the way.
Yeah, I'm willing. We'll see how it works out.
Okay.
So, we need to put our name on the paper too, though. It must be a public record of who we need to vote for.
Yes, exactly, but that way it's safe, we don't, it isn't a race to see who gets the floor first. We'll just write down your name, who you want to vote for, and pass them on down. Oh, and, and your name. Correct. Okay. Ray Debbie? Okay. Jonathan Edmonds is voting for Jonathan Edmonds. Okay. Shelley Nealon is voting for Jonathan Edmonds. Tom Buchholz is voting for Tom Buchholz. Janet Alanack is voting for Jonathan Edmonds. Lori McLaughlin is voting for Janet Alanack. And Erv Stadley is voting for Tom Buchholz. And Jennifer Trager is voting for Jonathan Edmonds. And I think we have a winner. Jonathan? Okay. Jonathan, congratulations.
Come on over here. You! With help?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, no worry, no worry, I'll walk you through things if things get weird. Okay, well, thank you for your support, I guess, and your vote. We'll see what happens. I, you know, a little rusty on the parliamentary procedures, but you know, we can work through that. I think that you guys, given feedback to me is going to be essential for what I do well and what I don't, as I'm doing it. Let's do it. Do you all have? So, for a second action item tonight, we need to nominate and elect a vice chairperson. And the same process and procedures will take place. I don't think we need any further explanation. I'll open the floor.
I nominate Jennifer Trager for the elect vice chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Janet Alanack.
I'd like to nominate Tom Buchholz.
Any other nominations? Okay, we will close the floor to nominations. Same process, but let me start, are all of you willing that we're nominating?
Yes.
Is there a question?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Same process, put your name down and who.
I noticed we didn't discuss that one.
But it's okay. Fair enough. Okay. Lori McLaughlin votes for Janet Alanack. Erv Stadley votes for Jennifer Trager. Jennifer Trager votes for Tom Buchholz. Tom Buchholz votes for Jennifer Trager. Shelley Nealon votes for Janet Alanack. Janet Alanack votes for Janet Alanack. And Jonathan Edmonds votes for Jennifer Trager. So... Yes, so we have three, three, and one. So now is a good time for some discussion. We need four to elect vice chair. So, I think, I think that to start with, if anybody wants to, wow, that might be an easy way to start this, otherwise, I think we can kind of go down the line and solicit some opinions and thoughts on why they think somebody should be...
Well, I think that Janet has some pretty keen skills. She works with boards and I agree at the forum, I was very impressed with the things she had to say and how she said that. So, I really like the idea of Janet. I know that she is brand new, that is, to me, the only disadvantage, but in the long term, I think Janet's got some really great skills stuff. I'm willing to do it, but I'm also willing to have Janet do it too. I trust you.
You're the swing vote, aren't you? You were the one.
I voted for you.
Yeah, you were the only one, so you're the swing.
If I voted for myself, or Janet, yes.
Okay.
Anybody want to convince me?
Well, I'd like to give it a try, if I may. I do stand by my vote for Janet. I think it's very clear with her depth and knowledge and her skills and her brilliance that you definitely would be a great asset as vice. That's why I'd vote for you.
I'll just say my own thoughts on this. I've worked with Jennifer now for a year, I'm very, very pleased with your insights and how you approach things. I've talked with Janet several times, I think you would do excellent. My only hesitation would be that you're brand new, first public meeting at least, you know? So, you know, I know what that felt like a year ago and where I'm at even now, a little less than Trager. So, that would have been my only hesitation.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to speak up for Jennifer mainly because of her experience and what I've seen in her in the past couple of years, and this is important, she has the ability to walk in both waters, on both sides of the opinions, really, I hope that makes sense. That's really important right now.
I would just like to say, I don't mean to be correcting, but I like to say multiple because sometimes we get caught in this two, you know, dichotomy and I think it's more complex than that, so I just wanted to...
Correct, yeah, thank you for the correction, but yeah, that's what I meant, you know?
I don't mean to correct, but that is important to me, an important distinction. I think that if Jonathan, since he is the chair and he feels more comfortable with me, I'm willing to do it. It's just for a year and I'm sure we can change it midway through if we need to, so that's kind of where I'm at for my vote.
Yeah, and I stand behind my vote for Jennifer for that reason. I don't know Janet, but I just think it would be an unwise move to step into that position at this time.
I strongly disagree. I, new or not, again, you have to consider a person's depth and their skillset and being on the variety of boards that you are, I feel that you do have the experience, the requisite amount of knowledge.
Take another vote and see if it changes.
Let's do that.
Same process.
Well, could I get a look at the agenda? Have them all read? Yep. Okay. Tom Buchholz for Jennifer Trager. Shelley Nealon for Janet Alanack. And Janet Alanack for Jennifer Trager. Erv Stadley, Jennifer Trager. Lori McLaughlin, Janet Alanack. And Jennifer Trager for Jennifer Trager. And Jonathan Edmonds for Jennifer Trager.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody for your speak.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now ready to move into the consent agenda. There's a long list, it's a list of things that occur, they're designations that occur every year. I actually wasn't here, it was right before I joined last time, so it's actually the first time I had a chance to be part of this process. There were a few questions I want to ask right now, if there are any questions or concerns with this particular consent agenda, or if anything is being requested to be moved out for separate independent discussion.
Yeah, I'll just speak up. I had wondered whether it was possible to actually take a look at the agreements that are 11 through 14. I understand that it's under the purview of this, from what I understand from our superintendent, it's under the purview of the superintendent to negotiate those contracts, but I was just really interested to take a look at what they were, just to be educated and just to know what we were entering into. And then I did have a question about number 12 and whether the contract for the Willamette Educational Service District was also being renewed at this time because I got a little bit of a, I wasn't sure I interpreted that message correctly, whether it was here as just a matter of transparency because we're renegotiating those other contracts and maybe it's on another timeline? Is that correct?
So, the contract with the Willamette ESD was approved earlier in this year in the consent agenda, so the reason why it was added, and it was added a little bit late, was more for the board and the public to realize who is all available to us for legal counsel. And so, the contract is not up for renew at this point in time. We wanted you to be aware of the various legal counsel that we can consult if we needed to.
Okay, okay. And then the insurance agent, Larson Flynn, do they handle all of the insurance for the district? I know the law firms are somewhat parsed out depending upon sort of what their specialty is, but is the insurance all handled by Larson?
Yes, they go through the quoting process for our workers' compensation each year, which, you know, we've been with safe for a little while, but that process is done in the spring. And then they also help us with our property casualty liability coverage, which is through PACE, property and casualty for education. So, they help with those two, you know, procurements.
Thanks for that explanation. I think especially with a lot of new faces, it's helpful to get some of that understanding, you know, it's a big list of things to sort of stamp and say, yep, we agree. So, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Jonathan, and we've had, over the years, we've had presentations from some of these outfits. I know Larson Flynn came a few years back, I think we had a safe one or a long, we have cycled him through from time to time to get a more in-depth understanding.
Yeah, Larson Flynn came once while I've been on board.
Yeah, so...
I understand what you're saying.
And if I could add one more thing, I think one idea to present to the board would be to any of these consent agenda items, especially in that group that Janet referenced, we could add those at upcoming board meetings, maybe one per board meeting. My recommendation would be to have those providers come and talk about the services they provide, how much they cost, and then have a representative from the district talk to you about why we choose those vendors, maybe either the great service they provide or something to that, kind of the why behind why one of those providers was chosen.
Yeah, Ben, great, I appreciate that.
Anything further, Jen, does that satisfy you with this list? I mean, are you ready to proceed if we were to proceed with the consent?
Yes, I would.
Anybody else?
Lori, I know, earlier I was asked, Chair, I was, you were wanting to have number 12 pulled out. Is that, are you satisfied now? I guess I'd let Jonathan.
Yeah, no, that's essentially...
Yeah, because that's essentially, as you said, it's been explained why it was placed on the consent. It sounds like it's already been approved, so, okay. Thank you.
This is, I think what this boils down to is, as much as anything, just a continuing FYI to here's where we still are at as far as the district with these choices.
Okay, that sounds...
And I would just add that if there, if we wanted to look over those different legal councils, there may be some questions as to why you would pick the Hungerfords for one, why you would pick Lisa Freely with the Willamette ESD for another, or Garrett Heeman Robertson for a different one, and kind of the thought process that the administrative team might go through in choosing somebody depending on the situation, that we could do that in an upcoming board meeting maybe.
Oh, okay. So, it's still open for discussion in, as far as the names and...
You know, for this purpose, these are just letting you and the public know who we go to for these, for these services. And in the case of the Willamette ESD, that is already a contract that we are under for a certain duration of time and continue to use that service until that time is up. But in most, in most situations, you could also be able to say that if a service provider was not providing the service you wanted, you know, as the superintendent, I would probably have a discussion with them and inform the board as to why we might be stepping away from a previous agreement if the services aren't providing the district what it needs.
Do you, do you have off the top of your head when the Willamette, what do you call it, the local service plan, when that was actually agreed to?
I believe it was at the February board meeting, the local service plan. And that's a normal, yeah, it's an action item. To give a little more background on the legal, I think the Hungerfords and Garrett Heeman have been on for quite some time. However, the situation with Willamette ESD, we have a number of different services available to us with the pass-through dollars for the ESD that they have to make available to all the component districts of the Willamette ESD. So, every February, March, we go in and meet with Willamette ESD administrators and select services. A lot of services we select are in the special ed area for services, of course, those are employees of the Willamette ESD. And then there's a number of other services, whether it be technology for, you know, connectivity, those types of things. They also have some pass-through dollars that come to us, you see that in the budget. But one thing they added last year, or in the end of the year before, I believe, was some legal services as part of the services they provide. So, we're not, and Lisa is that person at Willamette ESD, so we're not paying a separate bill if, you know, if we have Lisa help us with something. It's provided through those resolution service dollars.
Great explanation, Steve. Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to say, I think it would be out of place, Dan, if we had some of these companies come and rehash before the renewal. It's kind of, I think it's out of timing. If, when it's time for renewal, then I think we should have them come, but not just to reintroduce themselves and it's a lot of redundancy.
Yeah, and I may lean on Steve a little bit for this one in terms of, like he mentioned, some of these providers have been with the district for a long time, so I don't necessarily think some of it is necessarily contractual in nature. Really, some of this is just to let you know who we partner, who we do business with. And so, from that, I totally get what you're saying, but if there was a curiosity around, let's say, what the Hungerfords provide in terms of they have a team of attorneys, you know, what are some of their specialties, that wouldn't necessarily be bad information for the board or the public to have. I agree with you, if there could be a potential conflict, if there was a contractual annual renewing, we would want to make sure that we were doing that above board with bids and whatnot. But in terms of a particular service, a particular person provides the district, I don't think it's ever a bad idea to say, so what do you provide for us and why do we continue to choose you? For someone, for those ones in particular, those have just been ongoing services from the Hungerfords and Garrett Heeman Robertson have just been ongoing, kind of our go-tos.
I think there could also be some natural check-in points. So, the last two years in January, we've had a representative from Polly Rogers come and co-present the audit with me, the audit financial statement, and so, that was well received and that's a good time to ask questions of that provider. Of course, you know, there's always the opportunity to go up for an RFP and, you know, look at other providers at some point down the road. Also, with the insurance renewal, a lot of times that thing is a, there's a lot of waiting with the providers and quotes and back and forth, but there could be an opportunity for, you know, for a Larson Flynn representative to come and present, you know, the proposals that came in and what provider we've selected and why. Also, maybe give some, you know, he helps us with some safety training, things like that, so there could be some, you know, some natural checkpoints with that as well presentation.
I think from my perspective, you know, if there are specific concerns, send them to myself or to Dan or both of us and, you know, we can talk about it at a future meeting as a specific agenda item, or we could, as you said, bring somebody in for, you know, here's just a check-in, you know, see where we're at. I'm fine, you know, I'm fine with that idea. I think for tonight, I'd like to entertain motions to approve the consent agenda as published.
I know that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Move consecutively, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor, Steven, if I may say aye?
Aye.
Post? No motion. And now we have time for our public comment. I will read the statement and we'll get started. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way our student, the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual if a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf. The board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of this meeting.
Hey, Jonathan, quick one. Typically, this was, the vice chair would run the timer.
You want to do that?
Okay.
You bet.
My name's Laura Wonker. I live at 13307 Lower Woodland Lane in Silverton, and I signed in at the back. I work at the high school as a credit recovery and math intervention specialist, and I'm also an active member of our broader community. I speak tonight as an independent teacher and as a community member. I have friends on all sides of our current controversy. And I'm here to ask that everyone take a deep breath as we prepare to move forward. With the fewer social media, the reaction to the recent grievance, settlement of that grievance, and loss of our superintendent threaten to consume us with divisiveness. We do not have time for that and we are better than that. I'm hopeful that it has died down and will move to a more positive tone. Standing by teachers does not mean standing against administration, and standing by administration does not mean standing against teachers. I for one, stand by our hardworking and dedicated teachers, and I for one, stand by our hardworking and dedicated administrators. More teacher or administrative turnover is not going to bring us together. Our students are with us for a short time before we send them out into the world. There is not time to take sides, harbor grudges, or allow hurt to fester. We need to work together, as our mission states, all of us inside this room and those not present, to create the positive professional relationships necessary to maintain our thriving district. We need to build each other up, not tear each other down. Last year, we had the best graduation rate in Marion County. This year, our numbers are even better. We had a great year academically, athletically, and music, and all of our competitions made possible by all of us working hard together, and we should be celebrating together. Both the teachers' union and the district agreed in the recent settlement to focus on building positive relationship, and we need to all take our part in that agreement. In my 32 years of teaching in this district, I have seen administrators make difficult decisions about students or staff, often involving details that they cannot share. They make those decisions more often than many people realize, and I have never known them to take that lightly. They have much integrity and I trust them with the hard decisions. I understand that some teachers are troubled and concerned for the future and they have demanded change. Let's not forget that a change in relationship is not unilateral. To create change, we need to work together because a change in relationship does not happen when only one party makes changes. We have two more entities that need to commit to building positive relationships. We have this newly seated board who will need to work through their differences in order to make sometimes difficult decisions, and we have a broader community represented in this room. Our community also needs to commit to give this elected board and our teachers and our administrators the positive support to go about working together to rebuild these relationships. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We had a great year academically, athletically, and music, and all of our competitions made possible by all of us working hard together, and we should be celebrating together. Both the teachers' union and the district agreed in the recent settlement to focus on building positive relationship, and we need to all take our part in that agreement. In my 32 years of teaching in this district, I have seen administrators make difficult decisions about students or staff, often involving details that they cannot share. They make those decisions more often than many people realize, and I have never known them to take that lightly. They have much integrity, and I trust them with the hard decisions. I understand that some teachers are troubled and concerned for the future, and they have demanded change. Let's not forget that a change in relationship is not unilateral. To create change, we need to work together, because a change in relationship does not happen when only one party makes changes. We have two more entities that need to commit to building positive relationships. We have this newly seated board, who will need to work through their differences in order to make sometimes difficult decisions, and we have a broader community represented in this room. Our community also needs to commit to give this elected board and our teachers and our administrators the positive support to go about working together to rebuild these relationships. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jonathan, Michelle had previously asked, and so I, five minutes.
She gets five minutes. When do you want me to signal you?
What's that?
Signal you at five, signal you at, when is the due time?
Well, I timed my, yeah, 30 seconds.
You can tell I haven't paid attention.
It's laminated, so. Okay, well, my name is Michelle Stadley. I am the president of the Silver Falls Education Association. This is Sarah Barth. She's a newly elected second vice president of our association, and we came to deliver a statement from our teachers' association. So, the past few weeks have been very difficult for our school district. There have been many narratives put before the board by various parties regarding the recent arbitration settlement and arbitration findings. However, teachers have not been represented by those parties. We are here today to speak on behalf of the teachers, with the understanding that of 217 members, there are 217 different opinions and feelings regarding the events of the past few weeks. In speaking with you today, we believe we can address the concerns of the majority perspective of our members. We would like to address some of the inaccuracies presented to the board regarding the settlement, the arbitration findings, and staff dynamics within our school district. You've heard repeatedly that the district violated only one of many contract and policy articles of which they were accused. While it is true that the Miller arbitration findings only spoke to this one violation, it does not include those violations addressed by the settlement agreement. The district agreed to the settlement, because if it would have continued through the arbitration process, the district was likely to have been found guilty of other violations. This conclusion was confirmed by the district in the settlement agreement and communicated to licensed staff in a joint email on June 11th. The continued narrative of only one minimizes the reality of this violation and the others they admitted they were likely to have been found guilty of. We would also like to speak to the regular assertion of a vocal minority and silent majority that has been presented recently as fact. Our members have all been given access to the relevant documents, and the overwhelming majority have felt appalled at what they've read. At the high school, 58 out of approximately 70 teachers expressed a desire for action. For many, the arbiter's report was shocking, but for others, it served only as validation of the culture of fear and intimidation they have been experiencing. For example, in October, SFEA sent out a district-wide survey, where 78 out of the 94 teachers who responded acknowledged this fear. Additionally, Silverton High School teachers were surveyed at the end of the year about the climate set by administration in their building prior to the arbitration findings and after. According to the 38 who responded about the climate prior to the arbitration findings, eight described the climate using positive language, 11 were neutral, and 19 felt that the climate was negative. The same 38 described the climate after the arbitration findings as such: one positive, seven neutral, and 30 negative. Based on these numbers, both district-wide and at the high school, the idea of a vocal minority and silent majority proves to be inaccurate. We may be vocal, but we are not a minority. These narratives have downplayed the weight of the findings and have left many feeling like our concerns have gone unheard and our distrust has been exacerbated. Many are wondering, how do we move forward? While the call for accountability has been nearly unanimous, our 217 members have come to a variety of conclusions as to what that looks like. While it's difficult to come up with ideas that will satisfy everyone, we do feel it's important to be action-based and solution-oriented. We know that our district is broken and needs to heal. Here are some ideas we've come up with to help begin that healing process. Third-party mediation at the high school. An audit or evaluation by a third party of district practices. Danielson training for evaluators from the Danielson Group. Labor management roles and responsibility training. Board-issued anonymous survey of the superintendent. Superintendent-issued anonymous survey of building administration. Open lines of communication, including a non-restrictive working agreement with the superintendent and the school board when it comes to communication. And having SFEA as a standing agenda item on monthly board meetings, as the high school students are. Our intentions in providing these possible solutions are to start a conversation on how to move forward. Some of these have been presented in bargaining, and we will continue to address them through that avenue. We wanted you to know our thoughts, but in no way circumvent the bargaining process. We hope we can partner with you and district administration to repair and rebuild trust in our district. While we had reservations about the ability to continue with previous leadership, we were more than willing to work with the district to find a way forward. We're optimistic that fresh leadership will help to facilitate growth in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. To Bill.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll email it to you guys. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And can you copy Dan while you email that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else wish to speak?
My name is Jeff Skado. I teach at the high school. Been there for 27 years. I am lucky enough not to be involved in the social media barrage out here. I don't know what's going on there, don't care. I'm not going to be eloquent, I'm just going to state a few things. I have been there for 27 years. I've gone through seven principles. Excellent, average, good. I've never been with a poor one. I've been very fortunate. The people who have hired and resigned and stuff like that, they've all been good people. There's been two that I needed to go and apply at other districts, because if I can't follow my leadership, I need to do one of two things. I need to get on board with leadership, or I need to get out. My last experience was just two years ago. I was targeted, in my opinion. You never once heard from me. I held a couple meetings with people that were in charge. I talked briefly, talked to the point. My integrity was under duress, in my opinion. I could not follow that administration. I talked to a gentleman who's in the military. I said, what do you do when you cannot follow your leaders? He said, you do one of two things, you get out, or you move to a different group. I stayed. Fortunately for me, someone resigned. I never asked for that resignation. I never anticipated me being the person to push somebody out the door. All of us start, as teachers, our first few years, we struggle. Contrary to popular belief, administrations through their first few years will struggle. There will be issues. However, excellent administrators have made major mistakes in this school district since my being in this school district, major. It was during an assembly, if you don't recall, and that administrator was one of the best in the nation, in my opinion. He made a mistake. He owned up to it, he moved forward, and we moved on. And I believe that gentleman would still be our administrator today, had he not passed, because he was that awesome. I'm not saying that our administration is perfect, I'm not saying our teachers are perfect, because we're not, but we will work through things if given the opportunity. Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We will move into our discussion items. We have a 2019 through 2022 budget committee vacancy, several, I think. And I'm going to ask you, Tom, because I think you spoke probably with Dan about this, and I wasn't in that conversation, so the...
We just, oh boy, we just have, we have two budget vacancies that are open, and it's going to be, and that's really about it.
Okay, so we're just sort of identifying that this is the case, and if people are interested, we're encouraging them to correct.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the purpose of the discussion was to try to, you know, what are we looking for in candidates?
Thank you. I thought that wasn't part of the discussion.
And this is important, I think. Last time, we kind of didn't have the best process. We got feedback, let's just put it that way. And I think putting expectations or ideas on the table now is a good idea. It looks like we have two vacancies, and one of the person, Mandy Jo Steel, I just want to mention that she has had 18 years of service on the budget committee. And it looks like she's not going to apply again, but I think that she deserves some recognition, 18 years of service on the budget committee. So I just wanted to mention that.
Is she here by chance, or?
No, not here.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, Debbie, are you going to prepare for us a map showing where people are located in the district? Because location is a...
So pretty now in August, that is when we'll be accepting applications. And I want to sign off the mall, I'll put them all on the map, so you can see where everybody, where they are.
And I found that very helpful. I did, I really liked the colored maps. And I think the most important thing to me, when you sent those maps to us, was you showed who was currently on the budget committee and what zone they were from. And I'm a big proponent of trying to recruit, or anyone to recruit, from all of those zones. I think it's important to have a voice from all parts of our district to contribute to, not only the budget committee, but any committee. So I really like that process. I think it's very helpful. Yeah, so thank you for that work, too.
And is that application on the district website? Is that...
Tomorrow will be released. It's been updated, and I contacted somebody, that has to be updated. So on our website, the posting vacancy will go out, and then also on our board page, there's a link, there's a link there for the application as well. Yeah, that's all we got. Probably just identify there.
Right. Perfect. Can we talk a little bit about the process of that? So when you click on the link, you get the application. You fill out the application, then you submit it to the district office, and then we call for interviews. Don't we have them come?
First meeting in August?
I think it's the first meeting in August that we call for interviews, just to come and introduce yourself in person, so we can have kind of a conversation and get to know each other, you know, and see, you know, who that person is. Put a face to a name, because that's always a good thing. And then we take a vote on that evening and then decide, so.
Also, we did, just for everybody's reminder, we did discuss the policy around the budget committee.
We did.
And the current policy is on our, on the website, on the district website. If there's any questions about it, I encourage you to look.
And also, there's a link to our current policy on the application, it's available document.
Great.
A DBEA.
Great.
So, speaking of that policy, this is the thing that people had different expectations around last time, so it might be good for everybody just to put it on the table, like how you feel about it, or, I don't know, because I think you could interpret this many ways. The sentence in the DBEA, it's the third, well, if you go from the bottom, it's the third paragraph up. The last sentence says, "The board appoints budget committee members to as many consecutive terms as deemed appropriate. However, it will be the usual practice to limit service to two consecutive three-year terms." So people interpret that differently. I know that in my votes, I have tended to be on that limiting to two years, because we've had so many applicants. And I think in the past, there haven't been enough applicants. So, anyway, I think if you can interpret that in different ways, that's just the way I interpret it, and that's probably the way I will continue to interpret it, although you could change my, you know, somebody could change my mind.
Did you say, did you say two terms or two years?
Two consecutive terms.
Terms, okay.
Sorry. And the terms are three years each, right?
Next one. Okay. And in this particular case, I guess it would only, it wouldn't even apply, it wouldn't apply here, and it wouldn't apply where else I'm going to stay.
No, Robin's had two.
It does apply to Robin, too.
Robin's had two.
Yeah, so she's interested, and she can apply again, it doesn't necessarily mean that we will choose Robin if there's maybe...
Oh, reappoint, not appointed, reappoint, got it, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Good point.
And I want to thank Robin for her service, too, as well. She's been there for the last couple of terms.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about the policy or the process?
I guess just another thing that, to me, what this process comes down to, like, to me, like, there's what's in the policy, but one thing that I think is really important is that the members of the budget committee, they have their own circles of people that they talk to, and they can inform their circles of, like, what's going on, and that's a really great function of this committee. You know, it is largely, you know, just a process that we do, but that, I think, is where we can get the biggest bang out of this process, is obviously transparency, but then having a diverse group of people that can go back and report to the people that they talk to. So I just wanted to put that out there as part of, as when I'm selecting, I think of that.
Yeah, that's why I brought up the zones. I just like that idea of getting as much representation. Bring it in, yeah. I just really like that idea. And it does say that in our policy, too. You know, it says factor, you know, consideration given to factors such as gender, occupation, and place of residence within the district. So that's, I agree with Jennifer on that, too.
Yeah, it's a blessing and a curse to have a lot of people.
It is, yeah. It is. Or a blessing, yes.
Next up, July 22nd work session and the August 26th work session. July 22nd work session, I think, is in question because we have a July 24th meeting. Am I, am I right?
Correct.
Okay. And then the August 26th, because we have two work sessions scheduled at the end of August that date some dude made. 19th and 20th, it looks like.
One, yeah, the, we need to talk about what ongoing, searching for the proper term, but long-range facilities, all these committees, the things that have been started, but now we're shorthanded, and I think we need to make, we need to give Dan enough room to do the job he's got to be done. So we need to have that discussion of what's ongoing, and, well, a lot of it, a lot of it is up to you guys, what you guys think you can take off and we can handle this one or that one. So I'd like to just have that discussion and just say, this is what's ongoing, let's all agree on what, and then, and then decide where to go, go from there. And a lot of them, I'd like to just, for the most part, I'd like to just keep them off the side, because some of those, we don't know who our interim superintendent's going to be, but some of those might fall right into their wheelhouse, and then they can take them up. So, but we need to have that discussion on what that list of stuff is.
Agreed.
So, I don't know when to have it, though, but I was thinking, I was thinking the 22nd, but maybe we can do it in August, or even during an open session like this, maybe, if the agenda's light. But that's, that was my thoughts as of last week.
Right. Sort of the de facto position is going to be that those sort of sit on the side unless we're actively doing something with those committees or those discussions. I'm just looking at the July schedule, we're pretty big in July.
We are.
Right?
It's true.
And then you look at August, we've already got our regular public meeting, regular board meeting, and then we have the two extended work sessions, which I think are going to be very... very important. I'm, I'm a little bit loath to suggest we also meet on the twenty-sixth. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna fit all this.
I, I'm gonna toss it over to those guys, to Dan and his team. What would make your job easier? When, when would it help you guys to sort, to have us sort this list out?
Well, as far as the, the list of things that, that, that you're referring to, as far as ongoing committee work and whatnot, you know, we can look at that list and kind of prioritize based on, on what we feel we can handle and what, you know, what, I think the, the, obviously, priority is, you know, what needs to be in place for when kids return in September, you know, and what work takes that priority. You know, I don't think, speaking candidly, I don't think a facilities task force has as much weight as to something that's gonna impact kids and instruction come September. So, I think it's just a matter of us being able to be in a room together, which could happen probably as early as next Monday, a week from today, to look at those lists and kind of think, these are the things that we need to be focused on right now, that an interim superintendent can come in and probably just onboard with. And to your point, Tom, I think that, you know, picking something that it would be nice to have, and possibly nice to have an experienced superintendent take charge of.
Well, you never know, they just, you know, some of them, you know, there may...
Right. So, so, so whether that means that you have a July work session is, is ultimately your decision. I think a, a fair amount of those items, we should be able to, to pretty much handle internally with some updates to you, maybe, and, and perhaps, if you feel like the public input on certain ones, because you have more experience and time in the district, then, then, then maybe there's a decision and need to meet. So, I don't know if I'm answering the question or not, but I, I think that we can look at that list and make a, a pretty solid game plan.
You, you got, you, you feel you guys can do that without our guidance, say, on, on the next work session? Is that what I'm hearing?
I will optimistically say yes, so.
Yeah. I mean, well, I, I guess if something changes, you and...
I will be in regular communication with Jonathan on, on what those items are, where I feel like, what we can hit the road doing here in the summer months, and what we need to be tabled. And, and Jonathan can communicate that out to you. If there's any disagreement with that, you know, I, I'm a phone call away, so.
Right. I mean, there, there's a couple of things that are going on this summer that are pretty important, so we'll focus on those.
Sure.
And, you know, I think, I think as far as this goes, I, I'd like to talk with you about that list before we commit to a meeting to pack that I think maybe makes the most sense at this point.
Well, and I definitely need your input on, you know, what you, you have the history in the district to tell me these are, these have been, these are priorities.
Right.
So.
So, the July twenty-second and August twenty-sixth are still on our calendar? Actually, we don't have, do we have a calendar right now? No, okay, so those aren't on our calendar right now.
So, and, and, I'm trying to keep this all track. I, I did not bring the paper from last time, and I should've, the one that had all of our dates on it.
It's right here.
Thank you. So... July seventeen, we're already meeting. That's what, a third?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday. And then we've got a July twenty-fourth.
The board conference is that weekend.
And then the board conference in Bend is that weekend. And then, July twenty-ninth through thirtieth, our interviews scheduled, at least tentatively scheduled. None of that includes a July, I mean, throwing a July twenty-second work session in there has got us pretty much pegged through July, and I wanna be, I guess, conscientious of the fact that we all have families in life, too, that we'd like to find some time for or so.
Well, Jonathan, can I, can I suggest that you guys work on the list? I don't think any of those activities require board action. I mean, I don't, to, to, to keep those going, they're already kind of started.
Right, right, right.
So, I mean, I mean, I think I, I think you and, I think you can, you and, you and Dan can kind of work and say, hey, this is the one we can take, this one, let's wait on this one, and, you know, if, if something requires board action, if, if he says, if they say, we need to do this, and it's gonna take some action from you guys, I say, call a meeting, because right now, it's all about what these guys need. So, I'll let you guys, that's my suggestion, so whatever.
So, let's do that. So, then my question to you guys, and to Mr. Bush, is do we, can, can we right now scratch the board work session? I think, I'm gonna recommend we do, but I'm just, I'm looking to you guys for feedback on that. On the twenty-second specifically, and then I think we can hunt for a while, and I just wanna see half a month.
Yeah, I, I don't, if, if, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
If, if it's not...
I'm fine. Are there, are there opportunities in the other meetings that we're having to take action if we need to, or those?
That's a, I don't, I don't know if you can, I don't, it's a special meeting.
Yeah, probably.
I think, I think you only have the one topic.
Just to the one topic, right?
I believe, that's my, that's my understanding.
Yep.
I'd have to look at the policy specifics.
So, I mean, I think we can, I mean, we don't need to decide. If, if you decide, Jonathan, to cancel the meeting, you can cancel the meeting. You can just let, you can decide that tomorrow or the next day. So, I mean, maybe Dan needs to just talk it over with the team, and that's what I'm suggesting, and see what he needs.
Right, and, and let's do that. I've gotten feedback from you guys. Sounds like we're as collectively okay as a board. If you have a concern, then by all means, let me know, but I think at this point, we're playing the counter.
Got it.
All right.
Good.
Good.
Okay, public records requests. Again, I'm gonna look, Tom, to you, because I know you added this, or maybe, Dan, you added this, I, between the two of you, so.
Well, it was requested that it be added, and we also, Lisa Freely is here, and I don't know if Tom and I talked about Lisa coming to, to add any additional insight to this. I don't know if that's your call to...
I would love to have additional insight.
Okay.
There's, yeah, yeah, there's some legal definitions with this. I think she would be good to lead the discussion, I think, on this.
Right.
She probably didn't see that one coming at all, but that's, she came early.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're all my favorite people.
Although, there are a few new cases.
Okay.
So, I'll, so I'm, I will start by saying that, you know, it was requested that, a public records request was to be added to the agenda, and then you, it is also referenced as a, a topic of conversation during executive session. And so, I am, I'm going to speak in some generalities around the process of a, of a public records request, some of my recommendations on how we go about handling public records requests, and then allow a discussion by board members to, any specifics that, that I could either add insight to, or, or Lisa could add to. And so, I don't, and hopefully, I cover the concerns related to a public records request. So, a public records request is something by law that, that anyone can ask for pertaining to concerns that concern the public. And so, public school employees and, which are teachers and, and everybody who's, who is employed by the school district, is, is subject to a public records request. And so, when we get those, our job is to meet the law and provide, provide those people what it is that they are, they are seeking to find. So, you know, you could have a situation where, I'll, I'll try to give some examples, because hopefully, then, then that might, may elicit some, some context. So, you could have a parent who believes that maybe a teacher has engaged in some unprofessional conversation about a student, and, and so, could, could request email records related to their child. We would have to comply with that, that, you know, we would search our emails, and we would simply, we would look through emails to understand what we are providing them, make sure that there is, in that particular example, we would probably just give them everything for them to, to purview and, and do that. So, that's an example of, of where a records request comes in, and we are just compliant with the law, and we provide those people with what they are asking for. My guidance in, in a public records request is that we avoid worrying about who is requesting and why they might be requesting such records, because those are emotional avenues that cloud one's thinking. So, you focus on what is being asked, and, and how are we going to deliver that? Some, some requests are easier than others. And so, Lisa has provided, has provided the district in the past, a, a public records request guideline that, that the district follows to make sure that we are meeting our legal obligation to that. And so, so that's, you, you really have to take kind of an unbiased view of this by avoiding the why and the who, and focus on, on what do they want, and how do we want to deliver that to them, and, and meeting our, our legal requirements. So, you know, that's, that's my recommendation with, you know, with one that's been submitted recently, is that we, we comply with that request. So, I don't know if there's further discussion you would like to have, or questions for, for Lisa and I, but we are, you know, from where I sit, I'm prepared to meet the legal requirements of that request.
Lisa, do we, do we need to make that public request public?
If I could weigh in on that, and then she could correct me.
Yeah, she, yeah, she, yeah, you, you go first.
So, you know, so a public records request is a public document. Okay? So, my recommendation is that those, I mean, those can come about for a variety of different reasons, and it's not the type of document that you would, you know, it really doesn't have a lot of, most of the time, it's not going to come to a board conversation. You know, a principal, an administrator's going to get one of those, and we're gonna meet the merit of the law, and, and to notify the board might be if, if we thought there was potential legal matter, matter. I, as your superintendent, would not want to have you blindsided by that. So, so that would be one aspect of that. But they're not the kind of thing that you would necessarily make a common practice of, of just publicizing and putting for, for, on your website or something like that. You would, it's just not what you would do, I don't think. Again, I think some of the, you know, establishing some common practices is really important, because when you, if you did one time and didn't another, then people are going to, well, why did you do this one, and why didn't you do it on that one? And people are going to then interpret your, your motives for why you do or don't. And my recommendation, if anyone ever asks for a, you know, a, a copy of a public records request, that is also a public record that we would make available to them. But it's kind of one of those things they're going to need to ask for. It's not something that we're going to make a habit of posting availability.
That's a great point. I, I think it's particularly, particularly interesting, your point about, you know, the board would normally need to know, and I think that's probably exactly right, so.
Are there additional concerns, though? I mean, how common is it for a public records request to be from an attorney? Does that raise flags?
No, it's pretty common. This is probably the third one I've kind of worked with over the last, maybe, six months, so it's not completely unheard of. When you think of, probably the, the best thing I tell administrators when they're dealing with this, is you need to start from the, from the standpoint that every single, and they use the term writing in the public records law, right? And then they have this definition that goes on for like four or five lines, right? It includes anything that's paper, electronic, you know, pretty much anything, is, you start from the premise that it's a public record, right? And then you work backwards from whether or not there is something that exempts it or protects it from disclosure. So, you need to start from the concept that every single document that exists in this district, whether it's a piece of paper, whether it's a post-it note, whether it's a text message, whether it's a, an email, if it contains information that relates to the conduct of the business of this school district, it is a public record. And then, once you start there, then we start weeding out the ones that are either non-responsive, because there will be records, when you, when you do your search, there will be records that will be non-responsive, you know, because there are emails that go to individuals that are not related to the description of the request. You know, things like, here's the latest bell schedule, and all those who want cookies in the library. You know, there's all kinds of emails that get pulled on this when you do certain search functions. So, you basically then screen out those that are not relevant to the request. And then from there, once you have the relevant ones, you go through and see if any of those have any exemptions or need reductions to them.
Is that done by the administration typically?
Typically, you would start there, and then if they get to the point that they've got some specific questions, we can walk through some of the more technical, because a lot of it, when you look at the exemptions that exist under the statute, they're conditional, which means they're not absolute, and they're subject to a balancing test, in most cases, of the public interest versus the rights of, of the individual or the person involved. And to be honest, the higher up on the food chain you are, the fewer rights you have, right? You know, the custodian in a building probably has more rights than, say, Dana has, or Dan, or even you guys, right? You guys probably have the least as elected public officials. So, and then you look at what the topic is and the balancing of those interests. So, a lot of times when we get to those conditional ones, we sit down with the administration and we work through, you know, do you disclose, doc disclose? Do we redact? What do we redact? How much of it do we redact?
That makes sense. And it's a good reminder that, you know, we're, we're just all subject the same as teachers, the same as administrators, and the same, as you said, maybe even more so.
Right. Right.
Is there any sort of, I'm sorry, litmus, oh, go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna add, because I think the, the one, you know, you might, people might be wondering, you know, kind of, what's the check on this? I mean, these are, these are billable services that, you know, so, you know, we're, you know, if, if we get a public records request, that we go, that's gonna take us a week to try to fulfill, you know, we would, we would let the, the person who's, who's making that request know the, the, the cost of that. We can, we can not start that process until they've paid for, for that process. I mean, there is a check. It, it's not something that can just be, you know, submitted because somebody wants to look for something. There, there is some aspect of, they have to pay for that service.
I was just gonna ask, is there's any litmus test, or if it, if it's even relevant, to determine whether those records are truly in the public interest, or whether it's, you know, I mean, a personal, a person can't just decide, or maybe they can, just for their own edification, that they, they want...
Oh, they could.
They could.
Right. In fact, it's kind of, it's...
No test of what's in the public interest.
Yeah. This is my little Bible that I carry around with me. It used to be a green-bound notebook, but the Department of Justice no longer sells the bound copy. They put them on the internet. And so, I have to print my own and carry it around with me. But this is the Attorney General's Guide that almost all of us rely upon, whether we're looking at public records or we're looking at public meetings. And I thought it was interesting, because when I started looking at the very first page, I wanted to figure out where in the first page, and then I started kind of sorting through, because they've got a description of who can, you know, what is a writing, who is covered. But they have a statement in here that says, generally, the identity, motive, and the use of the person, their need or the use of the person requesting these is really not relevant to whether or not you provide the documents. So, someone could literally just have, like, wake up one day and say, you know, I'm kind of curious what email Dana sent to Tom Buchholz. So, I'm gonna request all the email that Dana sent to Tom. Now, I personally think I would, I would like to have more of a life than that when I wake up in the morning. Maybe I haven't had my tea for the day. But, but that literally is the extent of where some of this goes. Now, we hope, you know, number one, that, that can potentially be a pretty extensive search, and if it's a whim, right, even if it's only gonna cost me a hundred dollars, I hope that if it's just a whim, I'm not gonna spend a hundred dollars just to see if there's any email between Dana and Tom, right? And that is somewhat of the check and balance in that process as we go through it. But otherwise, it literally could be as random as, I'm just kind of curious if you have sent any email to anybody else that is relevant to a school board, or a school district, or a, a district... or a, a district program or action, yeah.
So I read some of that riveting document myself and all 54 pages of it. And I'm curious, though, because there seemed to be some leeway provided or some guidance or some suggestion that if you believe that there may be litigation that's being pursued or may be pursued in the future, that that would perhaps give you pause. So what are the, are there, are there constraints around that? Is there some way that you then, not that you wouldn't comply with that records request, but that you may then inquire about additional information? Or do you have additional rights under that situation if you believe that you might, someone might be preparing litigation?
So do you have like a specific example? It would help me probably to put some context around it.
Yeah, so under, sorry, this gets very weedy, but under IE 4D1, it says, "Public records pertaining to litigation." And it says, "It conditionally exempts," and it goes on to say, "If the public body shows that such litigation is reasonably likely to occur, the purpose of this exemption is to place governmental bodies as parties or potential parties to litigation on an even footing with private parties." And then it goes on to describe how you might, one indication, what indications you might have reasonably to expect that litigation was going to occur. Obviously, if somebody's filed a tort claim, then, you know, that would be kind of. And then it goes on to say that an interest in private litigation does not qualify as a public interest requiring disclosure. So not being a lawyer and not being very familiar with this, I'm just trying to understand how that plays.
Right, right. And recognize, when I use the word public interest, it, it is the public interest to the transparency of how the agency does its business, okay? So, and we have to be somewhat careful with that term because there is a provision under the public records law that talks about public interest and allows for a waiver of a fee, okay? If something's in the public interest. This particular one, I would say probably doesn't fit into that particular category. Nor have they tried to make that argument for a waiver of a fee. We often see that when we get a request from a media organization. You know, whether it was a local newspaper, the Statesman Journal, the Oregonian, whatever it happens to be. If there were documents that were, there is nothing that allows us to retain a document that could ultimately be used in litigation unless that document has some other exemption that applies to it, okay? So while you may be aware and you may be cognizant of what you're providing, so that you can at least be aware of what your liabilities and the boundaries of that liabilities are, which is a good, good thing, right? I mean, you'd rather hear about it before you got to a discovery phase, which is more connected to a technical litigation. If lesser something else that ties it to an exemption, then you probably aren't going to be able to maintain the disclosure of, the failure to disclose. Now, if there is ever a doubt, right? If I ever have a question as to whether or not something should be disclosed, I deny, right? Because then there is a remedy for, which is a fairly easy remedy for the individual who is seeking the records, which is to then move that request to the district attorney's office, right? And then another outside third party, under this statutory scheme, reviews it. And what they do is they ask us for the documents. They ask you why you have refused the disclosure. And then they analyze it and they come to a conclusion about whether I was right or whether I was wrong. And technically, I'm a fairly conservative. I would rather have to be ordered to turn something over than to improperly disclose something that I have a question about whether or not it could be questionably exempt, right? So if I have any belief that there's some exemption to it, I have a tendency to retain, tell them it's not going to be disclosed and then allow them to work their way through the process. And then if there, if the DA, let's say the DA overturns my decision. If we decide that it's an important enough issue for us to move it forward, there is a third step in that process, which is it allows us to go to a judge and ask a judge to overturn the DA's interpretation of the statute and then to retain it, or else to issue an order for disclosure, right?
That's very helpful, thank you.
And I think that's a very helpful process to help kind of balance some of those where there's a question as to, as to whether the document should or should not be exempt and gives us a, a way to move forward.
Well, because the district, it seems to me, has dual responsibilities. And that is to not only be transparent and accountable to the public, but also to protect the privacy appropriately of staff and personnel. And so I think there's a, there, those are both equally.
Yeah, there are some very, there are some very specific exemptions for privacy pieces, right? When you look at the actual exemptions in the list and you might not have had a chance to go through all like 400 and some pages of it. Yeah, I mean, I've only got a hundred and some here. So, you know, it's a fairly, it's a fairly lengthy document. One of the exemptions that exists for privacy. So the things that typically fall into that area are social security, home phone numbers, home addresses, especially for individuals who have requested nondisclosure for a variety of legal reasons. In some cases, they are seeking to not have people find them. So those things have a, have a tendency to fall into those areas. So if I had a request from somebody, besides the union, by the way, what I'm just going to say here, if I had a request for, for an, all the list of employees with birth dates, I would probably deny that, right? That's a confidential information, that's privacy information. And I would require someone to tell me to turn that over. We do provide that information to you guys in some of the, the records that we exchange with the union, but we do that as part of doing business. It's a business necessity that we do with those things. But that would be an example.
Aren't the, some of the, since you brought up the union, aren't they, some, some of their communications protected under collective bargaining?
Not if they use our system. So if they're communicating over our system, we clearly have communicated to them that it is a system that is subject to the public records. And they are, they, they, you do so, you know, at, at your own risk, at what you say on them, right?
So when there's a public, public records request that's addressed to two different entities, how does that work?
Two completely different organizations or subsections of the same organization?
And maybe the second one.
Okay. Then the main, because, let's take the school district. So the school district cannot avoid its responsibility to provide the records merely because those records reside someplace else. So take me as a very good example. There are records that I may have that would qualify as a public record for the Silverfall School District. And I may be the only one who has a copy of it. It's highly unlikely, but it is possible, right? And if that were the case and you got a records request for it, then I would be, you would notify me of the obligation to provide you that document. I would then be responsible for gathering up the documents, which are in fact your documents, providing them to you, which would then allow you to respond to the records request, right? The district also then is responsible for the records it has actual control over, right? Which would be things on its own email system, anything that is a, a physical document within any of its offices or buildings. It would then, if, if the request included other administrators or staff, we would have to go to them and say, you know, do you have anything that would be responsive to this request? And if so, will you please provide it to us? And if you don't, will you at least provide us a written statement that you have not, no responsive documents? Because then that will be what we notify the requesting individual that we have, that these individuals have identified that they have no responsive documents. And then they will have to decide, you know, at that point, what they're, what they choose to, what their next step is, whether they.
And that includes elected officials?
Yes, it does.
So what you're saying is that, that that's just one additional layer to the process?
Yes.
Because you would still go through all of the exemptions and?
Yeah, because remember, we're going to just gather up the documents. I mean, think of it holistically as we're just kind of getting all the documents in a box, in a room, in a file, whatever it is. And then somebody from the district will go through and evaluate whether they're in fact even responsive. So let's take an example. Let's say that I have documents that are a communication with Jody Drusher, for example, okay? I have emails in my email folder that Jody and I have exchanged back and forth. And that would potentially be a responsive document because it probably would have happened within the time period that has been identified. Even if I were to provide you those documents, you would end up excluding those documents because they relate to things like student discipline or expulsion hearings or the application of a student handbook provision. And that doesn't fit with the remainder of the description of the responsive documents. And so those would end up being excluded and would never be provided, even though they existed and fit the description of from this person or involving this person, right? So you start with the whole field and then you basically winnow it down to what is actually responsive. Any other questions?
Any further questions?
Not, not at this time, not for the moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Seth.
Appreciate it.
For coming.
Are there any other discussion items for tonight that anybody would like to?
I have two questions. One is about the work that Tom has started with the interim superintendent search. Is that something that Tom, wait, you want to hand it off or do you want?
I'll hand it off and I'll, I'll, I'll show where I'm at. It's, I'm almost done. I got six names on the list and for that, for the, for the list. And I've got some suggestions for, for the remainders. And I'm sure Jonathan can raise it up.
I have to find the other question.
I was going to work on it today, but I got sidetracked with other emails.
Okay, so use phone numbers.
Yeah, yes.
My other question is about the bargaining team. I think, don't we need to identify another person to do that? And I don't know when, but I want to bring that.
Right, so we had two on, you were one or?
Yeah.
Ron was the other and Ron's term expired last month. So with bargaining continuing, I think we do need at least that second person probably on there, especially if you're not able to make it.
Yeah, if I'm out of town, that's not really conducive to being on bargaining team.
Right. So I certainly would suggest that we do that.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm not board chair anymore. I could do it, but my wife does work in the district, though. So I don't know if that's a conflict of interest.
I would be happy to. I don't believe I have any conflicts.
Okay.
Jonathan?
I'm wide open to suggestions. I do think having some of there makes a lot of sense. I had volunteered last time. Now I'm chair of the, the. So, any other discussion?
Well, I don't know, yeah, I don't know who, who the decider is. I've seen the, I've seen the cycle a few times. I think, I think the experience might be nice. But like I said, I don't know about that potential conflict.
Right, one of the questions that I have, and this is a question I was actually going to ask probably tonight or Dan or whoever. My understanding is really, any of us could sit in on that if we wanted to. Do I have that right or am I mistaken on that?
It's my understanding that the board chair can, you know, kind of decide who, who's going to be on that team representing the board. I did look into that to figure out what, what the, whose decision and kind of where it was decided. So it is the board's chair decision as to who, who and how many are a part of that team. So, so I was going to consult with you this week to, to talk about that process. I will just say that my perspective is if, if you look to eliminate people, you always find a reason why to do that. So whether it's somebody has a spouse in, in the association or what have you, I, I think, I think it needs to be a person who wants to be part of the process, who's, can, you know, approach that, you know, open-mindedly. And I think all seven of you can do that. So I don't think looking for reasons to put yourself aside is a, a reason to, to, to not. I don't see that as a spouse or otherwise being a, a huge conflict of interest. Just my perspective.
Well, if it's, if it's up to me now to do this, I'll talk with Dan when we talk next and then I will let you guys know. It sounds like there's two people that have expressed interest in addition to her, who's already was nominated to do that.
Sounds good. Whatever you choose.
Okay, we're on to board reports. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss?
I just have one more thing I want to say before we left.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's okay, that's all right. I just wanted to thank Laura Wanker for coming here. I don't know where she is. And, and giving her testimony. I think it was a proactive, positive statement that is needed right now in our district. And I fully support those thoughts and feelings from her statement. I also wanted to thank, is it Jeff Scow? Scio, Scio?
Scio.
Thank you for coming here and speaking tonight. You gave some good perspective on being here for so many years in the district. And I, I took a lot of notes on your statement and I want to appreciate you coming and stating those facts and your history with the school district. So I just, I just wanted to thank the people for coming and having that dialogue in public. I think it's a good start to a healing process for our district. And I think they're important words to take to heart moving forward.
Okay, any, any other discussion items or I guess we'll just transition into board. Okay, we are now to the second public comment period, limited to discussion and action items. We had several discussion items, so. Anybody would like to address the board, feel free.
Hi, Chuck Shakatoff. I live in the district on Tillicum Drive. I just wanted to say a couple of things based on the last discussion. I wasn't planning on talking, but I think it's important to understand that you can also, besides denying it, you can also redact from a document. So if a document was, was a, you got a public record request for something and the document had some sensitive information like the name of a student or a health condition or something like that, you can cut that out and send the rest of the document. You can blacken that out and send the rest of the document. The other thing that Lisa didn't mention is that when a public official is the custodian of the record and the one who ultimately decides whether it comes out, the review is direct to court. It's not the, it's not the district attorney. So that's, that's, and because of that, that can also, that and other reasons, as public officials, if you're a custodian of a document, let's say an email you sent to somebody in the community that arguably is a public record, that your interest in it being released might be different than what the district's interest is. And so I think you can be at conflict with, with the district and might need your own legal counsel. And then last, I guess the executive session is talking about a public record request. I think the board should direct the staff to make it available online. Make it, make it public so we all don't have to send in requests for it. And if it's not a public document, or it's not, if it's exempt from disclosure, either conditionally or, or compulsory, then, you know, state that and let the, and one of us will figure out what to do next. But I think I have no reason to think, most, most public record requests are public, are public documents that are not exempt from disclosure. And the fact that you're discussing it in an executive session doesn't hide it from, that's not an exemption from disclosure. that, that's not an exemption from disclosure. A document that's brought to, if you brought a document to executive session and discussed it, I can request that document. I can't see your, your minutes of your executive session, which are kept, but I can see that document. It might be exempt for some other reason, right? But it's not exempt by the virtue of the fact that it was brought to or done at its executive session. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the new school board for the new members. Happy to have you aboard. I'm assuming that everyone else on the board, and the staff as well, is born again tonight, and that we are indeed looking forward to a new day. I really wanna speak about the budget committee. You had this as a topic, and you apparently are in the search for new members to serve on that committee. I serve on that committee as one of your budget committee members, and I have been very vocal about the role of the budget committee. We meet about maybe six hours, sometimes eight hours a year, to pass the budget of the school district. And this year it was a little bit better, but not very much better. And there are issues that are budgetary issues that come up without any consideration by the budget committee. Since half of the budget committee is the board itself, that may be appropriate or inappropriate, but the fact that you nominate people to your budget committee from the public, I being one of them, and expect us to give a positive report on the activities of the board to my constituency, or those around me, isn't very well executed by this board. You don't give me a lot of information to be positive with my constituency, frankly. I would like to have the budget committee be more involved with the budget. I would like the board to look to the budget committee for issues that pertain to the expenditures and budget of the district. I think the budget committee can serve a role, but if you're going to appoint new members, I would suggest that you think about this issue, that you consider what you want the board committee, the budget committee, to do, and that you appoint people with the knowledge that that is what, in fact, they are going to do. And if what, all they're going to do is sit for six hours a year and rubber stamp the district's budget, then I think you should be honest with them and tell them that. So that is my comment for tonight, and I'm very hopeful that we can work in a positive way to involve the budget committee in a more effective way on your behalf and in your service. Thank you.
Charles, just a bit, state your name and address. Thank you.
Don't check that.
No worries. I got, I got you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Charles.
Thanks. Any other folks wanting to address the board tonight? Okay. With that, we'll end the regular session, go to executive session, or S 192660 to H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation. Okay, we're returning to the regular open session. Is there any further business for tonight? With none, we'll close the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.